And welcome to the January 8, 2018, regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson.
Present.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Alderman Fortunati.
Here.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Gurman.
Here.
Alderman Genitazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilli.
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitale. 14 present, Mr. Chairman.
We have 14 present, we do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Peter Smith. I live at 394 Gulf Street in Milford. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Downtown River High Street Development Commission, which I happen to be the chairman of. Fortunate to have Alderman Vitale and Alderman Anderson as members of that commission as well. But I just wanted to give you a quick update in terms of what's going on with the commission about you initially established them in January of 2015. And since that time, what we've done is we've worked with a state grant and created a TOD development plan. And that plan is actually coming to fruition. And what I'm here tonight to do is to invite you to a meeting on the 18th in this particular location. And we have B&amp;L companies coming to present the plan, and they will give you the full overview of what their plan is. Now, just to sort of give you some background in terms of sort of what the process is that we're going through, the TOD grant is really a proposal or an outline that the city of Milford can use to look and see what's the best use of that particular parcel of land for the community. The grant that we're getting is it'll be about 125, 150-page document. It has about 250 pages of backup material. But basically, what they've done is they've looked at the whole downtown area of Milford, and they've looked at traffic issues, they've looked at place-making issues, they've looked at just sort of how the community uses the particular locations in that area. Some of the things that the committee has focused on from the beginning was making sure that it was an open and transparent process. Actually, our third meeting, we had a meeting with the Doreena Place residents because we wanted them to feel like they were included in this process. They're really the abutting homes that abut this parcel. And in addition to that, we had two public workshops, actually, three public workshops if you include the first walk-through. There was a lot of time spent, and the commission has spent a lot of time working with the consultant. But the good news is, is we have a product. We're going to be able to show it and display it to the public. That feedback will give guidance in terms of what the next step is. And the next step will be a request for an RFQ for a developer to take this plan that's been developed, for them to look through the plan, to get some ideas from the plan, but then come back to the commission with various ideas. Now, you know, somebody had said, "Well, what's it going to be? Is it going to add parking? Is it going to take parking away?" The answer is that those are really unknown, because this is a we're really waiting to see what a developer will propose, or what multiple developers will propose. And again, in that process, we're going to be transparent. We're going to make sure that everyone knows what's being proposed. We're going to get public input and those type of things. But the thing, you'll note that when, on the 18th, B&amp;L has come up with a couple of different ideas. Some of the plans add parking. One plan that they or one option that they're proposing adds about 150, 170 new parking spaces, and other adds 80 parking spaces. They have another plan that adds no parking spaces. But what we've heard from a lot of the community is parking is an issue, and they want to make sure that whatever development takes place there doesn't make the parking problem worse, it actually makes it better. And so that's much of the overview of this commission. But again, this TOD proposal is a planning document. It will be a good resource for us all to look through, and we want to make sure it's available to you. And I just also wanted to take the opportunity to compliment the Community Development Department and Julie Nash, who I tell you works harder than any person I've ever worked with before. So you have some great people on who work for you. So that's all I wanted to do, and thank you very much.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Board. I'm Robert Gregory, 14 Manor House Lane in Milford, and tonight I come to you as President of the Milford Municipal Retirees Association. First, I want to thank this administration and previous administrations for keeping the pension fund solid. Other communities are envious of our fiscal responsibility. When I look around at other communities in the state having pension problems, I realize how fortunate we are to live in a city that values those who have worked hard to make Milford a better place. All should applaud this fact, citizens, employees, and especially retirees. I also want to thank Milford's Pension and Retirement Board for their thoughtful deliberations on their recommendation. I had the privilege of attending several of their meetings and respect their desire to keep our pension fund fully funded. Their recommendation to you, as it is now, is for those that retired 1980 to 89, $120 annual increase. For those that retired 1990 to 1999, a 2% increase. For those that retired 2000 to 2009, 1% increase, and those from then on, no increase. I'd like to share some pertinent facts. The Consumer Price Index has increased 5.8% since 2012. That's the last time that there was an increase in the retirees' pension. Those increases were 1.7 in 2012, 1.5 2013, .8 in '14, .7 in '15, 2.1 in '16. This year's final won't be released until January 12, but in November, the CPI was up 2.2%. Social Security increases have been as follows: 3.6% in 2012, 1.7% in 2013, 1.5% in '14, 1.7% in '15, and no increase in '16 and '17. Finally, this year, up 2%. As you know, police and fire retirees have received an increase every year, as is their right by contract. The pension fund is 88%, 89% funded. There has not been an increase in the municipal employees' retirees' pensions since 2012. And the Pension Board only reviews this situation every three years. So if nothing is done by this board, then it'll be three more years of no increase. At their December 2017 meeting, the members of MMRA directed me to request you consider a 2% increase to all retirees across the board for the reasons outlined above. I thank you for your consideration of this request, and if you choose not to think about that, certainly, we would endorse the proposal recommended by the Pension Board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Felton Jackson. I live in 35 Sunset Avenue, Milford. I'm up here tonight to support what Mr. Gregory said, and also I'd like to just give something that concerns me. I've been retired from the city for five years now, and as he said, I have not received a cost-of-living increase. Social Security this year, I did get an increase, but with the increase to Medicare, and my net monthly increase from that raise is 60 cents. So it's this, I support the 2% increase, and it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on December 4, 2017.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item Number Four, there was no special meeting. Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Report. Just wanted to take this time to wish everyone on the board a very happy and healthy New Year, and also everyone in the studio audience, Happy New Year as well. Agenda Item Number Six, Alderman Veccharelli, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, Happy New Year to all of you. I hope everybody had a terrific Christmas, and 2018 is treating you well. Tonight, as you see in the audience, we have folks here to be appointed to our various boards and commissions. Our various boards and commissions, as you all know, the Board of Aldermen is a all-volunteer board. Volunteers are what makes this city so strong. Volunteers are what makes local government in Milford the best it can be. And I want to thank everybody for the hours, the long nights, the lot of time that you commit to the various boards and commissions that you are to be appointed to. Thank you for your service to this community. Thank you for helping Milford stay strong. I commit to working with you folks throughout your terms, whether it's a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year term. Again, please don't ever hesitate to contact myself or any of the members of this table so that we can help make Milford a better place to live. And with that, I would like to announce those appointments under 6A that are Mayor's appointments. And after I make these announcements, I know that we're going to go on to the rest of the agenda, but if the folks that I announce, if you could hold tight and wait until the appropriate time when the chairman calls everybody up to get sworn in by our city clerk. So just hold tight after I announce your name, and there will be an appropriate time where everybody is sworn in together. So with that, 6A, Milford Council on Aging, Doreen Fontana, Cynthia DeLuca, Richard Dowan, Shirley Serrano, and Theresa Nolan. Conservation Commission, Janet McAllister, Gail Hoffman, and Diana Vitale. Human Services, Barbara Genovis. Inland Wetlands, Kenneth Cowden. Milford Redevelopment and Housing Partnership, Charles Montebano. Veterans Graves Preservation Commission, Thomas Cody and David Derubis. Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request your consideration action also on Items 8A through 8E. There are a couple of Scrivner's errors that I do want to point out so that our Board Secretary could correct, namely, under 8A, Human Services, Susan Stango, the term is listed as expiring 12/31/2020. The actual date is 12/31/2019. Also, under 8A, Zoning Board of Appeals, under Michael Casey, the wrong address was listed on your agenda. It should not be 35 Edgemont Road, it should be 31 Riverside Drive. And finally, under 8E, Human Services, the Reverend Carl Dutzman, the expiration is not 12/31/2017. You would have to go back to the future for that. It is 12/31/2020. So with that, Mr. Chairman, feel free to ask me any questions as they arise during the penancy of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to open under Agenda Item Number Seven, Unfinished Business. There is no unfinished business. Agenda Item Eight, moving on to New Business, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read all of them in 8A. There's no objections. For the, I'd like to announce the board approval for the following. The Assessment Review Board, Henry Healy, Gregory Harla, Winthrop Smith III, alternate Jason Zamielew. The Building Code of Appeals, Richard F. Jigo. Civil Service Commission, Twig Holland. Board of Finance, Scott Moulton. Fire Commission, William Brennan and Kevin McGrath. The Golf Course Commission, Richard Austin, Marilyn Blake, and John O'Connell. The Milford Mint Harbor Commission, Joseph Gilbert. The Board of Health, Holly Mulrining. The Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Malloy Smith and Eric Johnson. Human Services, Susan Stango. The Library Board, Linda Credon, Linda Wonowski, Alice Oliver, Amanda Kemp. Park Beach and Recreation Commission, Bill Bevins, Felicia Shasinska. The Police Commission, Samuel Burgamy Jr. and David Rubenstein. The Sewer Commission, Edmund Collier. The Transit District, Michael LeBeau. The Tree Commission, James Mulaney. Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission, Russell Edward and John Jansen. The Zoning Board of Appeals, William Soda and alternate Michael Casey. That would be it for 6A.
8A.
I'm sorry, 8A. I make those recommendations for the board's approval.
Motion was made, is there a second? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Anderson.
I try to be consistent, and under our board rules, I would like to have the Harbor Management Commission appointment split from the rest, so that we can take a separate vote, please. And that's permitted by the rules. Thank you.
Alderman Anderson, would you like to make that in the form of a motion, please?
So moved.
Anyone like to second that for me, please?
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Alderman Veccharelli.
Any discussion, Mr. Chair? Point of order, Mr. Chair? Is there a discussion?
Did you find it?
Yeah, basically. So what we're going to do is we'll vote on everything except for the Harbor Management Commission, and then we'll take a second vote for the Milford Harbor Management Commission. So there'll be two votes. One for all the people that I've named and then approved excluding the Milford Harbor Management Commission, and then we'll take a separate vote on that single person. That's what the Alderman Anderson wanted this question divided. So we've divided it into two votes.
Thank you, Alderman Veccharelli. Any discussion? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Alderman Anderson, just for point of information, can you just give us a reason why you proposed to vote in this fashion?
Quite simply, as I say, I do try to be consistent. When this individual's name was presented earlier this fall, I abstained. I would like to be consistent, and do so. I would not want to vote against or abstain in any other case. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Now we'll do the Milford Harbor Management Commission.
No, that was on the motion to divide.
That was on the motion to divide.
Oh, okay.
But that's actually.
Back on the main motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion to divide is automatic, you don't need to vote on it.
Voting on the main motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of clarification.
Excluding the Harbor Management Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. At this point.
We're going to think of all in favor.
Yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're voting on the Harbor Management.
Now we're voting on the Harbor Management.
We voted on everything except the Harbor.
Because we're relying on the public management. So if everybody already voted, I think except the Harbor.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
First of all, I'm sorry for the confusion, colleagues. I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the vote that we just took was to approve all other appointees. And now the motion before us is to, is on the Harbor Management.
Correct.
Is that correct? Thank you.
Correct. Point of information, you made an amendment, you had a vote on the amendment.
I made a motion to divide it.
A motion to divide is not amending the motion? No. Mr. City Attorney, could you help us out? Mr. Chairman, through you.
If I may, Mr. Alderman Vitale, if you would like, we could vote separately on each one of these commissions and boards, if that's what you wanted. So dividing the question.
That's not my question, Mr. Veccharelli. Mr. Veccharelli, we need to know if it was an amendment to the motion, that's all that Alderman Anderson had made.
Mr. Vitale, Alderman Vitale, I'm just trying to say that if you choose, or any one of us chooses to divide this question, we could, in fact, vote on each individual one, one at a time.
But that's not my intent. That wasn't my intent.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Just to clarify it a bit, to Alderman Vitale's point, I think the mayor stated the way to proceed. If any of us wanted to divide a motion, we have the right to do so under our rules, and it does not require a vote. Okay? So there is no amendment, Ray.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to be voting for the Harbor Commission, what this was divided.
So we'll ask a big conversation. We're going to go for.
Did you make the motion for the Harbor Commission separate?
Well, it's already, if anybody have any questions.
Anybody have any discussion on the divided question? Divided motion, I'm sorry. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Thank you, Alderman Anderson, Alderman Veccharelli. At this point, I will entertain a motion to reorder the agenda to move Item 8E next on our agenda so that we can vote on all the boards and commissions before we move on to other city business. Is there a motion to reorder the agenda to move the Item 8E next on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, 8E.
The Animal Shelter Commission, Sarah Nyrenberg. The Economic Development Commission, Carlo Piscelli, and Victor M. Ferrante. The Flood Enrosion Control Board, Andrew Belavecqua. I hope I said that right. The Historic District Commission, Robert Bircham. The Historic District, South of the Green, Maruka Mosley. The Human Services, Milford, the Department of Human Services, Catherine, Kathleen Hurley. Also Reverend Carl Dutzman. The Inland Wetland Agency, Brenda Maggannon. David Flumarey. And Nathan Bullcock. An alternate, Matthew Connors. MGAT, the Milford Government Access Television Committee, Chris Heiser and Naja Phelps. The Pension and Retirement Board, Matthew Chaco, Brendan Marshner. Yeah, I think that's close. And Christine McInnis. Also William Farrell. Gregory Hammond. And an alternate, Janet Montebano. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, with all the newly confirmed board and commission members, come to the front of the auditorium to get sworn in by our city clerk. Thank you.
If you could all raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or sincerely affirm that you will uphold your duties and responsibilities on your prospective boards for the city of Milford, so help you God under the pain or penalty for perjury or false statement? Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. We are back from recess. Alderman Veccharelli, please go back to Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the.
Congratulations, everyone.
We are back from recess. Alderman Veccharelli, please go back to Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding supporting participation in the Sustainable Connecticut Municipality Certification Program.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. There are, we do have a guest who traveled this evening from Sustainable CT, Jessica, who made the long trip through the snow and the ice and the bad weather to be with us here tonight. And I know that this board just addressed our resolution to join Sustainable Connecticut, which is a brand-new program that Jessica's been working on now for the past year-plus. And I've been involved with, and a lot of other people in the audience have also been watching and monitoring it very closely. But it's something that is good for municipalities, good for the state of Connecticut, it's good for our environment. And I was going to ask, at your indulgence, if Jessica could just come up quickly, and if you have any questions for Jessica about the program. Jessica, I don't know if you want to say just a few words about an overview for the program?
Sure. So my name is Jessica Leclerc, and I'm with the Institute for Sustainable Energy at Eastern Connecticut State University. And I'm here tonight to get to you, to where you just landed, so you didn't need me, which is fine. It's just great to come out to Milford. So Sustainable CT is a statewide municipal certification program intended to enhance and increase municipality sustainability in all things sustainable, environmental, transportation, public health, housing, everything that makes a community a place where people want to live, work, and play. So the program's built up of 55 actions that you see in that trifold that you have in front of you. Seems like you've got a team assembled. I've been speaking with people out in the audience, and there's a great group of folks here in Milford who have shown leadership throughout the development of the program, including Mayor Blake. He was instrumental co-chairing one of our working groups. He offered up the government center for us to come and meet for five months. And he's also on our Board of Directors, so we're grateful for Milford's participation in the program and leadership. We look forward to working with the city, and I think that Milford's going to do very well in the program. You've got a history of sustainability actions already under your belt and a strong foundation from which to build. So thank you for participating. If you need anything, I'm here at the Institute to help you move forward with the program, and I look forward to working with you all. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You have any contact information where we can call you?
I do. Direct. I have some cards, and I'll leave them at the table.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Jessica, your last name is?
Leclerc.
Leclerc, Ms. Leclerc. The term "sustainable" is a very broad and often-used term. In my business, it means something with regard to recyclable materials for building products, things like that. Can you briefly kind of give us an overview of what your organization, what it means with regard to, I know the handout goes into some of this, but some specifics on what sustainability means and why it benefits our communities? And also a little bit about your program and what each of these, the different, the gold and so forth, the different levels of adherence would entail, what it means to the city?
So the broad definition of sustainability, off the top of my head, I can't say it. There are many definitions, and it's basically living within your resources to protect current and future residents. And we've really have looked at it broadly to make sure there is something for different types of cities and towns in Connecticut, that there are actions that an urban community can take on and be successful in, as well as a rural community. So we have forestry actions, we have complete streets. So those are applicable in different types of communities, and we wanted to build all of that into the program. Each, there are nine different categories that you see in your trifold, and each one of those categories has a different action underneath it. Some of them have three or four action options, some of them have, I think, up to 12. And within each of those actions, we have a recipe of what you're supposed to do to accomplish that action. So we tell you what to do, what to submit to us in order to show that you've completed the action, and then you get a certain amount of points that are associated with that. For bronze-level certification, you need 200 points. For silver, it's 400 points. For each bronze and silver certification, you must do one action of each of the nine categories, and that's to encourage a breadth of action. We've tried to build in some low-hanging fruit to sort of make that more achievable and get you into an action category that you might not be comfortable with, and then they move up to become more advanced as well. What other parts of the question am I missing?
Perhaps what do these things mean to us as a community in terms of, obviously, the benefits are greater efficiencies in use of energy and materials. That's my understanding of sustainability. It benefits, obviously, as this administration over the past few years has worked very diligently to make some of the municipal buildings energy-efficient or energy-star rated and so forth. Aside from the manifest advantages in following a sustainable plan as a government, what is it with each of these designations in terms of what the City of Milford can expect from this, in terms of the value it has in achieving each of these different guidelines?
Good question. So the benefits. If you look on our website, each action has a different benefit icon associated with it. And in many cases, the actions have multiple benefit icons, and those range from climate resilience, climate mitigation, cost savings, building community equity, public health, wellness. So you can see the different benefits that are associated with each of those actions. Broadly, certain actions will save you money, like you mentioned, the energy efficiency work that Milford's done, so you're reducing your energy bills. We've tried to point those actions out specifically. We know that oftentimes municipalities are in a bit of a budget pinch right now. Other benefits, becoming certified, sustainability is sort of a cool thing to be. I'm a millennial, and I know that millennials are a hot topic, and people want them in their communities. And this can be a way for you to brand Milford as a place that cares about these different values that are shared by new generations, with young families coming in, choosing places to live, work, and play.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alderman Girmann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mrs. St., what is it, Leclerc?
Yes.
Couple of questions. What towns in Connecticut are participating? And how long has this, is this a fairly new program? Or is this?
This is. So we just launched on November 29th at the CCM Annual Convention. So we are a month and a week old, and we have seven towns that have registered already, which is pretty good with the holidays. I know another community has a meeting tonight to pass the resolution. Hopefully, that will be successful. So it's gaining steam. The program's been in the works for over two years, but within the past year, we've really drilled down and created the action lists that you see in the action recipes. And that was some of the work that Mayor Blake was a part of. He led the Physical Infrastructure and Operations Working Group with Jerry Rolet, the Public Works Director of the City of Torrington. Throughout that process of creating the program, we included every single town and city within the state, either directly by having a municipal elected official at the table, a staff person, commission member, or they might have been represented by a council of government or a public health district, an entity that directly serves communities. We're proud of that, but it really, it shows that this is for towns and by towns. So people have been working on this for months. This is the project of the City of Milford. This is the project of the City of Torrington. So now cities and towns are taking it to the next step. This is theirs, and they're moving forward with the program, which is exciting, and we're extremely grateful for.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening. Under number nine, you list growth, sustainable, affordable housing options. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit, your perspective on affordable housing?
That action, each action, as I mentioned, has a detailed list of steps to take. So that one is spelled out if you go to sustainablect.org. Off the top of my head, I cannot tell you all the elements that are in that, but that is in line, I believe, with the requirements that the state has or the federal government. So if your community has done work with affordable housing and you're meeting what the action spells out, you do get credit for that sort of stuff. So that includes, I believe that action includes creating a housing data profile using existing information and a housing needs assessment, and then the growing more options of sustainable housing, affordable housing, rather, if that is appropriate for your community. So I can't speak to the action directly, and I apologize for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
I have a few questions. I support the effort and your leadership in this, and we also, as an alderward, some of us discussed the leadership that the mayor has demonstrated, and we're appreciative of that. The brochure is helpful, and the webpage was more helpful. I have some questions. Is there a plan to tease out some more of this? So for instance, it comes up, develop a watershed area or create an open space plan, and we even may be ahead in some of these areas. But what about monitor the plan, evaluate the plan, assess the plan, fund the plan, et cetera? You know, there are going, so that we don't, you know, get the good housekeeping seal of approval as silver, bronze, or gold without any plan attached. So what are the, who monitors that? And who funds you, so that we can make sure that those higher-level objectives are mesh?
So I'll start with the easy one. We're funded by the three foundations currently, the Emily Holt Tremaine Foundation, the Common Sense Fund, and the Hampshire Foundation. With reference to the impact of the plans, for the actions that call for a plan, that is, in fact, the action, to create a plan and submit it to us. There are actions that build on what might be included in a plan. So the watershed actions, there are three. One is an education-based action, one is creating a plan, and the third is to actually do something in your plan, or if it's not in your plan, to tell us why it's important and you should be doing it, let's say you skipped the planning action. And that's something we struggled with a lot internally, and then through our working group process, if we should start with doing assessment, creating a plan, doing the work. So that's like the perfect pyramid, and that's the camp I'm in. There are other people that I work with that were in the camp of, don't let the perfect ruin the good. So if you don't have a plan, you want to do the work, do the work. So we've tried to build it so that you can do either within the Sustainable CT action set. We have that range, and we do want to recognize that a plan is only as good as the work you do from the plan, and we don't want things that just sit on a shelf, but they are an important step.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. The plan is fantastic. I'm excited that Milford's going to be a part of it. And Milford as a whole has been doing a lot to be sustainable. And I just wanted to ask about some of the long-term plans that Sustainable CT has for maybe some of the future years, if you have done any type of long-term planning.
Sure. So we, this is our first year, this is our first iteration of actions, and these actions will grow and change over time, and we'll do that collectively, again, through a working group process. We'll only build with Connecticut residents, people who live here and work here and lead the state. When we started our working group process, we came up with hundreds and hundreds of actions. Each working group had, we had probably 60 in ours, just to start off, and we whittled it down to a more narrow bunch. So we've got a lot of fodder to work within, but of course, technologies will change, trends will change, data will be data-driven, so we'll move forward in that way. If you'll notice, the program, we have bronze and silver, so we're alluding to a mysterious gold, maybe a platinum, and whatever's beyond that. Wood, I think wood might be the most sustainable, so that could be the top tier. And that's something we do want to have, be more performance-based in metrics. That's what we're thinking, at least, at this stage. But really, we've created the program with the state. We want to make sure that we've done it, we've done it well, and we're meeting the needs of communities with communities, so this will be an iterative process that will refine. I should mention that there are 11 other statewide programs across the country that are similar to Sustainable CTs. There are differences. They've been around for up to 10 years in some cases, and we've tried to cherry-pick the best aspects of those, and we're part of a national network to work with these groups. We just had a conference in the DC area where we all came together and shared best practices. So we're benefiting from the work that's happening across the country in states like California, Minnesota, Florida, New Jersey, Maryland, and others. I can do the fullest if you want, but I won't. So we're part of this growing national movement to really tackle sustainability issues from the ground up, since it's easier that way, I think. It's really something that has to be locally driven, I think.
Thank you. And actually, one question to Mayor Blake as well. Can you talk about Milford's plan for this, or actually, just the board that's going to be handling the plan for Milford?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you, to Alderman Grant. We have members here from our Energy Advisory Committee, our local chapter of the Sierra Club. In the resolution that this board just adopted, it lists Steve Johnson, our Open Space Natural Resource Agent, as our point person for the city. He is going to help to coordinate our local efforts to identify each of the projects that, one, we are already doing, and also to expand on those as well.
Thank you.
But again, this is not just a Milford government effort. It is an effort for the entire community, whether you're involved in Milford government or not. A lot of our nonprofits, a lot of our clubs, a lot of the organizations, as well as individuals, we're going to be encouraging everybody to get involved. You know, if you own a house with PV, a PV installation, solar panels, you are going to be counted towards our point total. So everybody that contributes to this community will be helping this effort.
Thank you. Through you. I have one other question. For the sponsorships, do you take private sponsorships and the other groups that you mentioned nationally, the seven other statewide groups? Do they take energy donations? You know, is there any risk? Well, that's the first question. And will you, why the plans? And is there any risk for those sponsorships being, you know, PAC money for particular, for private organizations, energy organizations, et cetera?
So other states do, and they take it with a no strings attached clause. And I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak to the specifics, but they have major donors of gas companies, Walmart, and their money is green, and it supports good work in communities, though there is the optics of it, that gas companies giving your program money to do actions.
It's more than opposite, yeah.
Yeah, so we want the program to be successful, so we're navigating the sponsorship arena carefully, and we will likely take private donations very carefully. But we, everything costs money, so we want to be able to funnel money also to communities. So that's one of the other benefits of the program, is a small grants program, a small grants fund that will be in place to give, you know, $1,000 to $5,000 to $10,000 grants to cities and towns to carry out certain actions within the program. And that's something that we're in the works. We have a funder who's, and it's not a private, well, it is private, philanthropic funder
Board, how enthusiastic and how gratified the library directors have been at the awarding of this grant. It's something that they were very instrumental in promoting and securing, and I think it's a wonderful amenity for the library, and just wanted to thank them for all their efforts, as well as the Library Board.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request per the attached recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board, dated December 19th, 2017, for the acceptance of the Capital Improvement Plan for the years 2018 through 2022. This document is located in the back of this agenda.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Through you, sir, to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, just for the sake of putting it on the record, what are the new recommendations contained in the capital improvement projects?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Anderson, there are several. The Board of Education lists their new priorities, which, scheduled for this year, there's probably five. The ones that are more likely are going to be some of the security upgrades. I know that the athletic facilities will likely be ones that the Board of Ed is going to be recommending for next month. And in terms of new ones for sewer, there's approximately 3,500 linear feet of sewer line that runs along the end of Nogaduck Ave, over to Viscount Drive, that has been in jeopardy now for the past year. That will probably be the next project that's new to this capital improvement plan this year, and it is probably the next project that this board will be asked to fund from a sewer perspective. There are a couple other smaller projects that are new, that have recently been identified, that are included in this document, including things like, for compliance reasons, underground fuel tanks for the, both gas and diesel, for our public works pumps. There's a couple of recreational facility requests that are included in this, including the equipment that we have at the 20-plus parks and playgrounds across the city. So those are some of the things that will likely, that are new to this agenda, and some of which you may be seeing next month, when we go out to our annual authorization requests for bonding.
So, as a follow-up, through you, Mr. Chairman, we may see Viscount Drive and the Board of Ed requests in this fiscal year. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more, any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, Agenda Item Number Nine. There is no new business tonight. Agenda Item Number Ten. Moving on to budget memo transfers, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 10A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the budget memo transfer, number three, and number four, Fund 10 and FY 18.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consideration of refunds in the amount
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Twelve. Reports of standing committees. Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda Item 12A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ordinance Committee of the Milford Board of Aldermen met earlier this evening to consider an ordinance further amending Chapter 17.1 of the Code of Ordinances. This is with regard to general government retiree adjustment. At, with the advice of our actuary and the action recommendation from the Pension and Retirement Board, this ordinance will propose amount of cost of living increase over a period of time for non-uniformed city employees, pensioners, going back to a retirement year of 1980 through 2008. This ranges from a $120 increase to 2% of those who retired during the 1990s, 1% for those in the 2000s. It was, it was referred to this full board with unanimous recommendation, and I'd like to present that as a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just a recap, as we went over in the Ordinance Committee, that I think there were 458 individuals who were impacted by this request, and at a rate of $45,000 for this year, then it will be $580,000 to the end of that, we'll say, contract or time period. I need help understanding, in the 80s, where the, where the retiree will be getting $120 compared to the 2% in the 90s and 1% in the 2000s, on an average of retirement, how does that, 2% in the 80s would probably be less than the 2% in the 90s, because salaries would be obviously more. How does that 120 equate with the 2% or the 1% in later years?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. Again, the 458 was an approximation based on the last report. The different levels that have been recommended by the Pension Board, obviously, the folks that retired more recently, the cost of living should be less, because they get the benefit of having less of a increase in all other things. We did do some research. The folks that were in the 1980s, that instead of getting 1% or 2% or 3%, got a flat rate of $120. That's because if they were given 2%, it would likely be a lot less. The average was less than $100 for 2%. That's why they went with a flat rate of $120, to give them at least $120. Again, our Finance Director, Peter Ariadis, could go into a little bit more detail, but that was the intent of the Pension Commission, to give the folks that retired in approximately the 1980s, that flat rate of at least $120, so that they would get at least something.
I could understand that. But in the 80s, what was the average retiree salary? You have that?
I don't think we have a specific figure, but...
Example of an individual in the 80s retiring, and gets 120, and what it would mean if they got 2%?
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking through a report. Again, the retirees' annual pension amount for that period in the 1980s, I mean, it is all over the lot, but it, you know, there are pension amounts of approximately $4,000 a year.
Pension amounts of $4,000 a year? In other words, that means that they're getting $4,000 per year as a retiree, correct?
Yes.
So 2% of the 4,000 would be, of the average, would be $800, probably, and then 1%?
2% would be $71.
$4,000?
Well, actually, I averaged, it was 355, $3,558 was the amount, and 2% of that would be $71.
So 2% of an average of, what, $3,500 is what?
So the, so the average retiree for this class, or this group of folks, in 1982, for example, was $3,558. 2% of that would be $71.
Okay, thank you. And the average salary in the, so it's close. In other words, are they all getting about $120?
It's, it's all over the place. Again, in a particular year, you may have a series of low-wage folks retire, and another year, you may have a series of higher-wage folks retire. So, literally, the, the years, even though there is an average for each year, they fluctuate significantly.
I could understand that, that, you know, whatever the contract, they're leaving on whatever the contract is, but it just seems to me that a 2,000, 2% of somebody in the 90s would amount to more than $120. That's, and I don't know what those salaries are, that's the whole thing. Across the board, is it equity that we're looking for? In other words, if, if somebody retired in 80s, they're making $120, and in the 90s and 2000s, they're making $120 also? Or is it more?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. This is a cost of living adjustment. The Pension Board perhaps thought it was an equitable amount, given the fact that they have not done this in several years now, since 2015, I'm sorry, 2013?
I, I understand that, but it just seems to me that people who retired on more of a, on a greater salary, 2% of a greater salary would be more than, I would imagine, $120. I don't know what those, those numbers are, but as long as the board and the retirees, I guess Bob, when Bob Gregory was talking, that, you know, he's looking across the board 2%. But I don't know if he worked out the numbers as to what people in the 80s are getting, as opposed to people in the 2000s are getting, so I don't know whether that's the equitable piece, or it's out of, out of whack. I don't know. Maybe he can explain it. I don't know if he, he did it. I don't know, the numbers.
Mr. Chairman, again, I don't know the specific question that you have. Our Finance Director is here. He's happy to weigh in on a specific question, but a lot of this is theoretical. There's pension amounts. This is really a policy decision, and if you need more information, I've...
No, that's fine, as long as it's, it's agreeable, obviously, to, to everyone out there, but it just seems that, you know, $120 for those in 1980, you think they would be making less, and they'd be more of a cost of adjustment, cost of living adjustment, as opposed to those who just retired in 2008 at a greater salary. And it's always a percentage of the salary. So what is the percentage of the salary that they're, they're retiring on at this normally? In other words, if somebody retires right now, and they're making 70, 80,000, what is their percentage of retirement?
It all depends on their, the number of years that they were employed. It depends on...
Is it 2% a year, if they've been employed for 20 years or 30 years, on top of, you know, with their salary?
There's a formula, and there's a lot of different factors, but generally, it's approximately 2% or 2.5%, depending on the unions. Some of it's based on total wages, some of it's based on base pay. Again, each pension agreement is different, so I can't say it's uniform. It's uniform within, within each pension agreement, but there's a whole host of factors that go into each different determination, each different formula. Approximately 2% as long as you're vested, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor. Is it fair to say, Mr. Mayor, that the people that retired in the 1980s have had the benefit of more cost of living increases than those who retired in the 19, early 1990s, late 1990s, 2000s?
Yes. Every three years, there's a wage study done by the actuaries. There's a recommendation over the period of that time for a cost of living adjustment. We have not done the research all the way back to 1980s to find out exactly how many COLAs this board has adopted. We've only done the recent history of the last six years, but presumably, over the course of the last 30 years, there have been COLA adjustments throughout.
If I may, again, Mr. Chairman, again, through you. So, Mr. Mayor, then, going to Alderman Vitale's point, the pension on which persons retired in the 1980s is not getting an extra $120 a year, that is not, that is in addition to the increases that they've received over the years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Giattasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just wanted to share my thoughts. It might be prudent for us to have the Chairman of the Pension Board come before us, you know, next time we have a increase of, you know, living expenses for these people. Maybe they can explain to us why they came up with this formula, or how they were advised of this formula, and what the pros and cons are. I think that Alderman Vitale does have some valid questions, and it would probably be more helpful for us, as board members, to have that correspondence at this level, being that we're voting on it tonight.
Alderman Beatty.
I would like to share my thoughts. It connects to what Alderman Giattasio just said, but I voted to support, I believe, in the cost of living adjustment, the fact that it hasn't been done in five years. But the firm of Hooker and Holcomb, what is the actuary for the city? They were commissioned to study this. I believe they had tables. I think in, in some ways, it's overthinking to question that at that level. The Pension Board is empowered to represent us, so I voted in that spirit. I think that there are varying degrees of understanding about how this is done, and what the outcomes are. It might be good to have a panel, but I, or a workshop about it, but I don't think it needs to be within the Board of Alders for a vote. It's not something that I, that is necessary to approve this in, in concept. And I think the understanding of the finances of the $43,000 per year, that definitely is our legislative budgetary fiduciary responsibility. But other than that, there are so many other variables in how they came up with the actuary of tables. I would like to leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reflect on this, too, briefly, is that a cost of living adjustment is a fairly standard practice among all private and public organizations and institutions for their pensioners. I think Mr. Gregory, well-documented, Social Security, other cost of living adjustments made over the, over the many years since this was last adjusted, which, as he pointed out, last time this board took this up was in 2012, 2013. We, was presented by the Pension Review Board again in 2015, and we elected not to grant any cost of living adjustment. I think it is incumbent on the, on the, on the city to treat fairly with cost of living adjustments, the pensioners that have worked so hard for this city. And as Alderman Beatty just mentioned, and while I under, and as I understand Alderman Vitale's point, the point of the actuary is to get an accrued amount of this, and to take into consideration all of those factors, including inflation, including existing contracts, and how it reflects back on the fiscal impact to the city, which has been documented here. So I take the Pension Review Board's recommendation, as I did three years ago, and feel that this year is the time that we do owe it to our pensioners to support this adjustment, and I will be voting in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any more discussion? Alderman Vitale. Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any more discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, I just, my point was equity, as far as those people who retired in 198, in the eighties, nineties, and 2000s, and whatever. But it also has to understand that this is a municipal COLA, plus the Social Security COLA that one would receive. And there are some organizations that can't double dip. There are somewhere, some unions that, or some people can double dip. So, these are important considerations also, as a, as a consideration that my retirement doesn't include a Social Security. So, there are other organizations and other departments that get both municipal and COLA. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item, agenda item number, is there, first of all, is there any more reports of standing committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 13. Are there any reports of any special committees? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss 14A, consideration of settlement of Wendy Gibbons at L versus City of Milford regarding 11 Bonceline Street. Item 14B, consideration of settlement of Milford 4 LLC versus City of Milford regarding 1306 Boston Post Road and 1330 BPR. Item 14C, consideration of settlement of Iret Milford Marketplace versus City of Milford regarding 1620 Boston Post Road. And item 14D, consideration of settlement of Iret Milford Marketplace versus City of Milford regarding 1650 Boston Post Road. Joining us in executive session will be the mayor, the city attorney, and city assessor. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For an executive session. We are now out of executive session. Are you all ready, Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item number 14A.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Wendy Gibbons versus the City of Milford regarding 11 Bonceline Street, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, 14B.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Milford 4 LLC versus City of Milford regarding 1306 Boston Post Road and 1330 Boston Post Road, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, item 14C.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of the Iret, Iret Milford Marketplace versus City of Milford in regards to 1620 Boston Post Road, in accordance with the recommendations of the city, city attorney and city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item 14D.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize settlement in the matter of Iret Milford Marketplace versus City of Milford in regards to 1650 Boston Post Road, in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney and city assessor, as discussed in executive session.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.